Welcome everyone to the regular meeting of City Council on Monday, September 24th, 7:00 PM. For those of you wishing to address the City Council on any item on the agenda or under public appearances, oral communications, please complete a speaker card located at the entrance of the council chambers and submit to staff member as early in the meeting as possible. May we have everyone stand for pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. May we have roll call, please.
Ms. Christensen.
Here.
Mr. Gangona.
Here.
Mr. Buenaventura.
Present.
Mrs. Sylvester.
Ms. Manalo.
Present. Okay. First, on our presentations, we have the Jefferson Union High School District Faculty and Staff Housing Project with Superintendent Dr. Terri Deloria, Board President Andy Lee, and Board Vice President Kalima Salahadine.
Good evening.
DA team.
Is this the clicker?
It is.
Okay.
Right.
From slideshow. Left to the slideshow.
You have your piece of slideshow.
There we go. There we go. Thank you so much. Mayor Manalo, Vice Mayor, council members, thank you so much for having us tonight. We're real excited to share with you some work we're trying to do in the area of staff housing. I do have with me our President of the Board, Mr. Andy Lee, and our Vice President, Kalima Salahadine, and I think you know both of them. So, I'll go through some slides at the end. There's plenty of time to ask any kind of clarifying questions as well.
There's some concern from the audience, they're not hearing this. So, is the microphone not working?
Testing, testing.
The microphone's not working? No, it's not. What about the hand mic? Let's try that.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
It's okay.
Get it up good and close, because we don't want to miss it.
Now, can you hear me?
Nope.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Great. We want you all to hear. This is exciting stuff. We want you all to hear.
We don't want to miss a single word.
That's right. So, tonight, we want to spend a little bit of time going over the need. We want to talk about the project goals. We have some success stories of other places on the Peninsula. We'll share our own draft site plan, and then we'll take you home with our next steps. And, of course, any questions you have at the end. So, the need. So, I love this quote. This is from one of our employees. "I live in a room in a garage that's about 150 square feet. With housing prices skyrocketing in the Bay Area, it would be a godsend to have more than a closet for $1,200 a month." And that's not uncommon to hear that, especially from our new staff. So, every year, we have about 40 open teaching positions. In fact, I can tell you, I did a lot of HR over the summer, we had to replace over 20% of our teaching staff. Equal numbers of classified in management, seven vice principals alone. And the trouble with that is, it takes two or three years for a teacher to acclimate, to get used to the new district policies and things like that, such that if they're changing, it's really hard on teaching and learning. So, there are a number of qualified candidates who never consider our district because of housing costs. And there were several times this summer where people actually accepted teaching positions and then found out they could make something more in another district close to us, and so they would go somewhere else. We do have a few open positions open even today. So, even when candidates who accept a job, oftentimes, they rescind their acceptance. We have really poor retention rates, and that increases our training costs, because most of our training, of course, is in the first two years of our employees. And the frequent turnover is really hard on faculty and staff, and especially on our students. So, we needed to do something about this. So, the goals of the project we're talking to you about tonight are for, to allow the district to address the teacher and staff shortage by enabling recruitment of new faculty and staff. We wanted to be able to improve our retention, so once we hire them, we want to hold on to them. It would be great to have the staff live in the community where they teach, so we'd like to keep people either in the Daly City or Pacifica area. Let's keep them here. We want to reduce commute times. Obviously, there's an environmental benefit to that. We want to maintain flexibility for future development, and we also want to be able to optimize some of our surplus property. And now, I will turn it over to Ms. Salahadine.
Hello. Thank you so much for hearing us today. We're happy to share this information. So, in addressing this issue, we looked to our Community College District, who's been doing this very successfully for over a decade. They were able to build workforce housing at multiple sites, and they're actually looking to build even more at Skyline College right now. So, they started a little bit more than a decade ago with College Vista, and this was built at their Kenyatta site. This was their first offering of workforce housing. And then, they went to, I'm sorry, this was, oh, no. Sorry. This is at CSM. This is at Kenyatta. So, this was actually the first. Then, they built at CSM. And the reason why they kept building is because there was ongoing demand. So, they tried to start out small, because they were trying to level gauge how much housing to build versus the demand. The first project filled up, so they built another project, which is also full, so they're building another at Skyline. In the discussions with the board members of the Community College District, they said this is the best investment they've ever done in terms of employment and staff retention. We all know the high cost of housing, so to have a place for them to live, but also to have a place for them to live that they want to live. So, when we look at the two housing developments, you know, I would want to live there. They're really nice.
Looks good to me.
And so, we want to provide a space that's not just a place for them to lay their head at night, but a place that they're proud to call home. And then, to, for an example of a K-12 district that did this, this was Santa Clara Unified School District. They were the first school district that was in the K-12 space to build housing. They were looking at 40% turnover rates per year. So, and Santa Clara was going through that housing boom a few years ago, and so they were really crunched in finding housing, not even just moving into housing. They didn't have enough at that time. So, they were able to lower their retention turnover from 40% down to 15%. So, we're looking at all of these and really reaching out to all of these different boards for advice on how we move forward, and Andy is going to continue the story.
Thank you so much for your time. So, next, we'll, I'll take you through the draft site plan and show you what we're doing. So, as you can see, actually, let's see, right here, you know, this is the entire site of Ceremonie del Rey. And right here, off of Ceremonie Boulevard, where you have the entrance to the Ceremonie del Rey building, over here is, there's that empty parking lot, and that's where the proposed housing development would be built. We've had, we had a community meeting back in November of 2017, which was, you know, advertised via mailer and postings, to discuss our feasibility study and get a gauge from the community what we were doing that for this project. And here is actually a draft plan of the first floor of the building. You can see, back here, adjacent to the hillside, is the parking garage, and here, we would have the actual footprint of the building, which would house the majority of the units. Right over here, which is, which would be along the tree-lined berm, would be five, actually 10 units here, five three-bedroom units and five one-bedroom units. Total, total plan right now would be to do 116 units, which would, which would house about 25% of our staff. Four stories, and you can see the breakdown there, about 60% one-bedroom, 30% two-bedroom, and 10% three-bedroom units. And we'd have community spaces and playgrounds. For instance, here, you have your community room. You'd have the management office up here. You'd have laundry and a teacher workspace, staff workspace. This is the draft site plan of the landscape and heart state. You can see the courtyard here, where you'd have a grass area. There's a couple of playgrounds here. This one is a tot lot for zero to two-years-old, and we'd have another playground here for older kids here. We'd also have some barbecue spaces, some, you know, some outdoor living spaces for our staff. And right here would be sort of a new entry area that comes in sort of to create sort of an inviting entry into the, into the development itself. And this is what the project would look like from the exterior. This top drawing is actually looking at the building from Ceremonie Boulevard, so you can sort of see the elevations here with the, with the fourth story up here and the look here. And then, this would be the separate building, which is along the berm, which would have the three-bedroom units on the top two floors, and you'd have one-bedroom units on the bottom floor of the development. This is a slide that just kind of shows some of the inspiration that our architect has used from previous projects of his, that shows what type of elements we'd be looking at in the outdoor spaces. And here is our proposed timeline of the development. I know we've already been speaking with the planning department over the past couple of weeks, which is very exciting. And we'll begin environmental and traffic studies this month, and you can just sort of see the timeline. I won't go through every item in the timeline, but as you can see, we're, what we're hoping to do would be to break ground by the winter of 2020, and hopefully, based on the construction schedule, be able to have residents and staff move in in the fall of 2021.
And I just want to add too, that we put a lot of thought into the design, because we not only want to retain the teachers that we have, but we also want to use it as a really good recruiting tool, because we can't compete and will never probably be able to compete in payroll compared to the other two districts to, you know, with the amount of money that they get in through their property taxes. They just have a much higher budget than we do. But this is, you know, if we can send our HR department out with the specs and the pictures of what we can offer, we can give you a really nice place to live, come and teach with us, and you'd be able to stay there for at least 10 years, possibly. I think it'd be a magnificent recruiting tool when we're trying to outreach, especially for those hard-to-fill positions in special education, science, and math.
Right. We're following, we're really following the model and successes of the Community College District, and they have said to us time and again, that, that their staff, one of the benefits, in fact, that they have discovered, that they weren't anticipating, was a sense of community that was developed amongst the staff that lived at their various developments. I mean, where, where folks are sick, and they're bringing chicken soup for them, and they're watching each other's kids, and we would anticipate, we would see something very similar with our staff here, especially with 116 of them and their families living in our units.
We'd be the first K-12.
Yes.
We'd be the first K-12 in San Mateo County to do it.
So, are there any questions?
Thank you for your presentation. At this point, any questions for my colleagues?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you for the presentation. It was excellent, and I think this concept is long overdue, that we do something like this in our community. So, I just have a couple of questions. So, when you say it's, it's for workforce housing, what does the workforce consist of?
That would be our educators, or both our certificated and classified staff, so teachers, as well as folks who are working in the cafeterias, our custodial, our custodial staff.
Fair professionals.
Fair professionals, all of that.
Okay. And then, what is the, the, I guess, the term that they're allowed to sort of stay there, or is there sort of a limit, or what are the rules of their occupancy?
Right. That'll be, that'll be determined up, once we develop a housing board, that'll, that's the group that will determine that, but, you know, the Community Colleges currently have a seven-year time limit.
They're extending it to 10.
Yeah. The, the Community College started with seven, and they're moving it up to 10 years, because the, the goal is that they're staying with us long enough to save enough money to buy a house when they leave. So, they've moved that out to 10 years to give them their option. So, one of the nice things about what we're doing is, with building the 116 units, we're hoping, a lot of the other, Community College Districts started out small and worked their way up. We're just building to projections, so we're hoping that we have enough spaces for enough teachers that we'll be able to let them live there for an extended amount of time. But we're going to have a Community College Board that's made up of a few board members, some of our teachers, members of the community, that will be making those decisions on length of stay and other internal housing managers, to give a bit of separation between the board not wanting to be property managers and having a housing board that is making those decisions.
Okay. And how are you funding this? What's the?
We've been fortunate with the passage of Measure J back in June. We have $33 million towards the development costs of this, of this, of this development. So, we're very, we're grateful to the community for its support and for allowing us to make this happen with those funds.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I think it's so important to house our teachers, and seeing that you're utilizing a model that worked in, you know, the San Mateo College District, it's exciting to see how it's going to come to fruition here with the Jefferson Union High School District, and I'm sure we look forward to see how it unfolds. One last question. So, you said it will be 25% of the workforce at Jefferson. How is that process? So, is it application lottery? Because I'm sure there's so many teachers and staff that want to avail of this, and then it's about 25%. So, is it a lottery process?
That process has yet to be determined, but likely, we would follow that, because that's what the Community College District has done.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. When I first started working for Jefferson High School District, Jefferson Union, I was living in a garage. Yeah, on La Sane Avenue. And I remember how challenging that was, and how thrilled I was when I was able to get like a real place to live that had more than one room and a microwave. So, I know firsthand what a joy that's going to be for your employees, and to know that it's going to be stable, they, they can start having that sense of, I'm home. So, I'm very thrilled about this.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great job, you guys.
Thank you so much. All right. Moving on to our next presentation, we have a certificate of appreciation for Mr. Charles Tellerico. Is he present? Hello.
Do this with fancy. Emergencies.
No emergencies, but it's my great pleasure to have the certificate of appreciation. On behalf of a grateful community, we, the City Council of Daly City, take great pleasure in presenting this certificate to Charles Tellerico in recognition of nearly 40 years of dedicated service to the residents of our city. We thank you for your contribution as a Daly City employee and the information services, including your special dedication to supporting our volunteer clean community committee. Also, we appreciate that after your retirement, you continued your service to our city as a seven-year member of our planning commission. You brought an exceptional commitment to encouraging civic engagement in the planning process by visiting each proposed project site and engaging the neighbors by informing them about the proposed projects and inviting them to attend the planning commission meetings to learn more about their views. Your site visits brought on-the-ground details regarding pedestrian safety, traffic concerns that made a significant contribution to the planning process. The City Council of Daly City extends its heartfelt and gratitude for your outstanding service to our community and wishes you abundant health and happiness in all your future endeavors.
Thank you. (applause).
Like I mentioned to somebody, you do, don't do two things to an Italian. Ask her to buy pizza and give her a microphone. I appreciate being able to serve the community. I appreciate my mentor, Judith. I appreciate the ability to work with a team from the planning committee that was a planning unit, which is fantastic, from Kelly, our legal aide, legal chief, to Michael and Tatum and Building Division and these engineers and the traffic. We could not understand or do anything without these people. Similarly, you know, it takes the backup team to make the front team work. And I think one of the things also, I wish people listening, you should fill this room every time with questions. Planning commission, we needed questions. We needed to be challenged so that we could put forth communication to the board, and they, in return, could eat a question or pass it. So, input is necessary. And I ask the citizens, please, be aware what's happening in your community, because they, nothing can be done until we, the citizens, put input. And I would ask that we try to find a different way of communicating construction in an area instead of papers on a telephone pole. People don't see that. And also, you have about almost two-thirds renters, and if the landlord gets the information, he might not pass it to the renters. So, suggestion, you have a spot on your water bills. There is a spot to put a notice, and I think maybe you could use that when large plans like the Westlake Shopping Center, the Ceremonie, the Cereboll Center, put in a water bill so the people can come.
When it's going to be here.
Would help us. And I appreciate this award. I continue to work for the city, because being here 30-some years, you're my family. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Next on our agenda, we have the, oh. It's okay. Thank you. Thank you. Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, Walk-Bike Daly City. Mr. Niko Latunik, the lead consultant, and Aizen Latunik.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Earlier this year, the City Council authorized the award of contract to update our existing bicycle and pedestrian master plan, which is about five years old, and most of the projects on that plan will be completed within the next year, year and a half. As you mentioned, Niko is our consultant, and we are just getting started in our public outreach process. I will turn it over to Niko to provide a little bit more detail in regards to the project and the public outreach campaign. One final note, this project is being done with grant funds. So, the public work staff did get grants, and that's what's paying for this project.
Thank you.
So, Niko?
Thanks, Richard. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name is Niko Latunik, and I'm the lead consultant on the update to the bicycle and pedestrian master plan. I will point out that this time around, the update, we're calling it the Walk-Bike Daly City Plan for two reasons. One is that it's just a more public-friendly name than bicycle pedestrian master plan. It's a little more intuitive, and it lets people know more easily what it's about. And also, we wanted to put walk first, rather than bicycle pedestrian master plan. We wanted to say walk bike Daly City, because many more people walk in Daly City than bike, and that will continue to be the case into the foreseeable future. For tonight's presentation, I'm going to keep it quick. I have about five slides. I want to tell you the project objectives, the planning process that we're going to go through, the work that we've done to date, and then just tell you a little bit about the public outreach strategy for the plan. In terms of the key objectives, again, like I said, it's updating the bicycle and pedestrian master plan in order to figure out what the next set of improvements should be. Like Richard said, many of the projects are, from the previous plan, are being implemented, but there are always more things that you can do to make walking and biking safer and easier in Daly City. So, again, we wanted this plan to reflect what has been done, but then also engage the public and get their input into what are the new needs, the new expectations, what are the concerns that people have, because that will inform the recommendations that we come up with. We want the recommendations to closely reflect the needs of the community. And lastly, we want this document to be an advocacy document for funding. We want the city to be able to have a project that identifies the priorities, the needs, and some fairly well-developed concepts, so that you can go to grant funding agencies and say, this is what we heard from the community, these are the key needs, and this is what we're seeking funding for. In terms of the planning process, the project launched earlier this year, I would say in the spring or so. We went through a process of figuring out what the planning context surrounding walking and biking Daly City was. That's what we call kind of the existing conditions, what is in place right now. Now, we're going through a community needs process, where we're going out to the community and saying, again, tell us, you know, what are the walking and biking needs? What are your concerns? What are your ideas and suggestions for improvements? And then, based on that input, we're going to develop the recommendations for the plan. We hope to have a draft plan by spring of next year, and then a final plan by the summer of next year. So, we will be coming back to you for that. In terms of the work to date, we have set up a project website, which I will talk about in my last slide, because it's part of the public outreach. Like I said, we've looked into the planning context and existing conditions. We've completed a number of more technical analyses and collisions, public health, equity in terms of disadvantaged communities or vulnerable populations, and now, we're collecting input from the public. So, as part of the public outreach, we have already begun to do some community events. This presentation is also part of that. We, I will be doing a presentation this Thursday at Hillcrest Gardens Senior Housing. We'll also be, we were at the Latino Heritage Month event two weekends ago. We will be at the Philippine-American Heritage Event next month. And then, we'll also be doing tabling at the farmer's market and a Daly City bar, where we, obviously, will get a lot of pedestrians and also cyclists. I encourage you, in case you haven't already done so, to, sorry, to check out the project website. It's walkbikedalycity.org, and this is a screenshot. As you can see, there is a link to an online survey. There's also a link to an interactive map, where you can pin location-specific comments. There's a listing of events, and also a section where we'll be uploading documents that the public can review. That is it for my presentation. Thanks for your time. Let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions for my colleagues?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you for your presentation. I had some questions. I'll just throw it out there about some of the issues, I think, either I'm hoping you will tackle or come up with some recommendations, because I'm very interested in things like, you know, when you say walk bike, where does, where do the, like, where do scooters fit into that? Also, I see a lot of the, those two-wheel hoverboard-type things that are starting to sort, I see a lot of the kids riding on sidewalks. Also, the Lime Bikes, and what kind of recommendations are you going to be making on that? And then, that's, in general, what I, what I'm concerned about.
So, the scope of the project is really focused on walking and biking. Scooters are related, but to the extent that we do hear from the community that there are concerns around it, we want to address them through, there are a number of management strategies for addressing those issues, and also the proliferation of shared bikes, for example. So, again, we want to hear from the community and see, like, this is useful, this is helpful, to hear what's on people's minds, and then that way, we'll be able to tailor our recommendations and management strategies for that, because the plan will recommend not only physical infrastructure projects, but also... So, the scope of the project is really focused on walking and biking. Scooters are related, but to the extent that we do hear from the community that there are concerns around it, we want to address them through, there are a number of management strategies for addressing those issues and also the proliferation of shared bikes, for example. So, again, we want to hear from the community and see, like, this is useful, this is helpful, to hear what's on people's minds. And then, that way, we'll be able to tailor our recommendations and management strategies for that. Because the plan will recommend not only physical infrastructure projects, but also policies, practices, and so on.
Okay.
Yep.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Your website showed what, the question I was going to ask was, is there an opportunity for people to do this on digital? So, there, I see that they can take a survey online or on their phone. Is it, is it actually mobile-friendly?
Yeah, it is. Yep, quite.
Very nice to hear. And then, also, wanted to know, what other cities have you worked with in, in the past?
I have been consultant for about fifteen years and we have developed bicycle and pedestrian plans, both at the regional level for MTC. They've been a client of ours. We, we actually developed the regional bicycle and plan for the Bay Area. We have done works for, plans for a number of county-level agencies. So, with the Transportation Authorities of Alameda, we did the Alameda County Bicycle Plan, the Alameda County Pedestrian Plan, the original ones, and also the updated ones more recently. For San Mateo County, for Contra Costa County, and then also the local level for city, oh, we did the San Bruno Plan that was completed about two years ago.
Very nice.
Yep.
Thank you. We'll look forward to hearing the outcomes of the survey, the input. And for those of you watching out there, you know, make sure to provide your input because it's extremely important to gain that around the needs, around, you know, you know, walking and biking and really trying to make sure that this, the city has access around these opportunities to walk and bike. So, just telling everyone out there watching. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So, we do have a table set up right outside City Hall. If anyone wants to provide some comments or input, we can take them tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Christensen, I think she has a question.
How are, how are we reaching people to tell them to take this survey?
Good question. A number of ways. Through presentations, tabling events. For example, we went out to Dolder Senior Center. They have a luncheon program and we spoke there.
I partake of it frequently.
Oh, okay. I don't know if you were there that time.
Probably not because I would have remembered you.
So, we made a presentation there. Again, at tabling events, we've worked with the city to put it in the city's newsletters. We have our own mailing list of about, over a hundred people that we'll be sending a newsletter out to. We are reaching out to the San Francisco and Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalitions. I will be stopping by every elementary, middle, and high school to drop material off and ask them how we can get information to their students and their parents. We are also going to put up boards at the libraries, at City Hall.
Maybe even in next door. That would be...
Yes, social, we've also, yeah, social media posts as well.
Because that's, when I look at who's on there, it tends to be a group of people that are very consistent and, and they're not always the people that you see at these other kind of events.
Yep.
So, that would catch a whole new cadre of people.
And we are trying to reach out to as many different types of people.
Yeah.
So, that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next on our presentations, we are proclaiming the week of October 7 to 13 as Fire Prevention Week. Mr. Clyde Preston, the Inspector of North County Fire Authority, please.
As mentioned, we are proclaiming Fire Prevention Week, October 7 to 13. Whereas the City of Daily City and North County Fire Authority are committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting Daily City. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas homes fire, home fires killed were about 2,735 people in the United States in 2016, according to the National Fire Protection Association. And fire departments in the United States responded to about 352,000 home fires. And whereas the majority of the U.S. fire deaths, four out of five, occur at home each year. And whereas the fire death rate per 1,000 homes fires reported to the U.S. Fire Department was 10% higher in 2016 than in 1980. Whereas Daily City's residents should identify places in their home where fires can start and eliminate those hazards. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And whereas Daily City's residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room outside each separate sleeping area and on every level of the home. And whereas Daily City residents should listen for the sound of smoke alarms when it sounds by responding to, by going outside immediately to designated meeting place. And whereas Daily City's residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas Daily City's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection and education. Whereas Daily City's residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take action to increase their fire safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2018 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Look, Listen, Learn, and Be Aware", fire can happen anywhere, effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. And now, therefore, I, Justin C. Manalo, Mayor of Daily City, and with the City Council, do hereby proclaim October 7 to 13 as Fire Prevention Week.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, thank you so much for this proclamation and for the, representing the North County Fire Authority. And this proclamation actually helps us kick off all of our events for the month of October. And we do have a very busy month ahead of us. Our firefighters will be going out to all of our elementary schools and commercial preschools, talking with the children about fire safety and giving them information to take home to their parents. And also, we will be having our fire station open houses. That's the second Saturday in October. That's October the 13th. We'll have three of our Daily City stations open. That'll be our Station 94, the Ceremonial Fire Station on Geller and Wembley, Station 95 on Lincoln and Edgemont, and also our Station 93 in the Bay Shore District on Martin Street, right next door to the Bay Shore Community Center. And in addition, we'll also have the Linda Mar Station open and Brisbane Station 81 on, on Bay Shore. So, it's a, it's a great event from 10 to 2. And again, that's the second Saturday in October. And invite your friends, family, neighbors to come out. We'll have fire station tours and showing off the fire engines and doing safety demonstrations. So, it's great for the whole family. We encourage everybody here to attend and everybody at home who's watching. So, again, thank you for recognizing the importance of fire safety here in Daily City and the North County Fire Authority, all three of our cities that we serve, and helping us kick off Fire Prevention Week and Fire Prevention Month for that matter.
Thank you so much. At this point, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much for the regular meeting of September 10. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Of approval of the agenda, please?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to the consent agenda, I'd like to pull Items 7 and 8. With pulling the Items 7 and 8, is there an approval to approve the other items on the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Item number seven, acknowledgement and affirmation of the City of Daily City's harassment and complaint procedure. I, I pulled this item because I, I want to thank the staff for updating, you know, our harassment policy. Early this year, you know, there, there were incidents and a movement around ensuring that, you know, people and women and just everyone felt safe to be able to voice their opinions around harassment, whether it was harassment in work or sexual harassment. But I think it was really important for the City of Daily City to make sure that, that, you know, we were current with our harassment policy and that our employees knew that this is in place. And it, and I just want to thank the staff. This is something that was brought up earlier in the year. It was a process to work with all of the other organizations listed, if you'll notice, to have this all updated with our harassment and complaint procedures. And so, I, I want to commend the staff and I want to also for, you know, the employees to know that this is here for you, you know, and it's important that we had it updated. So, thank you very much. And I move to approve item number seven?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Item number eight, commending John Fuller on the occasion of his retirement. Mr. John Fuller, please come up. His, his will retire now. So, I wanted to bring you up and say thank you for your commitment to Daily City and all the work that you've done. I know that it was, oh my goodness, ten years, ten years is a decade of, of giving back to the City of Daily City. And wanted to be able to say thank you to you, wish you the best on all your future endeavors. Enjoy your retirement. And I know Ms. Maltby also wanted to say some words.
I do. I might have the last word with you, which is really impossible. I'm really going to miss you. I cannot believe you've been here for ten years and I think it's because you were never complacent or stagnant. So, I feel in my mind, you've only been here for a second because every day you came to work was like the first day. You always were ready for a challenge for good or, you know, it may be crazy sometimes, but I'm definitely going to miss that passion because even though we got into some great debates, you always had the city's best interests in mind, always. And I've learned, in this new role of mine in the last three months, I've learned so much from you. I'm going to miss so many of the Fullerisms at management team, something like, what do you call it? What do you call it? I mean, who's going to say that? Richard Chu, you better start saying, "What do you call it?" Because, anyway, I, I am dearly going to miss you and I know your staff is going to miss you. You've done some amazing things and I know you're going to be a great grandpa, too. I know, not a great grandpa, but you're going to be a wonderful grandpa. But, thank, thank you for all that you've done. It's been a joy to work with you.
Yep.
Councilmember Christensen.
John and I've had the pleasure to serve on the Coma Creek Committee together. It has, it has been a joy to work with him. And frequently, there would be issues around town and I would call him up and it was always taken care of immediately. And his whole team over there was incredibly supportive of, when we wanted to do the Mission Street, Upper Mission Street cleanup. I remember you got us all sorts of equipment and we were out there doing that. The whole team you have over there is very wonderful to those of us who like to do those extra cleanup things. But also, it was always a pleasure to talk with you and I felt that we understood each other pretty well and that you would come up with creative ideas and say, "Oh, well, yeah, we could do that, but no, we could also do this." And I'd go, "Oh, that is a real good idea." So, I appreciate that, having the courage to tell me, "No, but this is a better idea" because it was a better idea, and the fact that it was wonderful serving with you. And I know you're going to have a wonderful grand time in retirement. And so will I. We're sort of going out together.
Councilmember Gengona.
John, John, I remember when we hired you and, you know, you, you really did fill in the shoes of whoever your predecessor was. I don't remember. Doesn't come to mind.
Pete?
Just kidding.
So special, nobody remembers who came before.
No, but seriously, I, I think that, that your management style is excellent. I think that your department is a very well-run department. It's one that, that the people there respect you and you get results out of them. I've actually had an occasion to, to actually have dealings with you, which is, is kind of tough. As a council member, you don't have a lot of personal dealings with individual department heads. But in the, in 25 years that I've been here, I've had an opportunity to do that specifically with department heads. And with, with you, John, it's been a pleasure. Always, as, as, as perceptive as Judith is about the way that you operate, I've had, I've asked you to do things for me and I have had what I thought was an approach and you've, you've been able to, to do what experts do and that is give an expert opinion and change my mind.
Yep.
And it's always good to know that you have that kind of, those kind of people that are working with and for you. And I've always said this and, and that is that, that, you know, it's, it's great to be up here and do this job, but it wouldn't be possible without people like yourself that are putting it out there every day and really caring about the product that you put out. You never mailed it in. And for that, I appreciate you. And you are going to have a very well-deserved rest, okay? So, enjoy yourself.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
Yeah. Let me just say, John, that, you know, just like what everyone else is here, has been saying is, you, you tell it like it is and you don't make any apologies. You have, I think, a lot of institutional knowledge and you're confident in your assessment of things, which I appreciate. Because when you talk about an issue, you're prepared and you obviously have done your homework and it, it gives us a lot of confidence in some of the things that you've said and done because we know that you put your heart in it. And so, I appreciate that. I remember when I first got on the council, how you took me around, you showed me some of the things that were, we were doing. And you were very meticulous about it and you offered your time and you were very generous in being patient with me. So, I, I want to thank you for all your years of service. I hope we could still rely on you as things come up because you do have a lot of knowledge and you know a lot about our city. And so, thank you and congratulations on really a job well done.
Thank you.
Now, it's my turn. Do I need this? I, I have to tell you that retirement is kind of bittersweet for me. I know that's kind of a cliche. It's going to be sweet because I'm going to be able to spend time with my grandson. He's my first. And I'll be able to do a lot of the things with my wife, my long-suffering wife, who probably knows as much about public works as anybody in this room, including me.
Too much.
Because she's heard every story at least once. And I'll be able to do a lot of the things that didn't have time or money in the past to do. But it'll be a little bit bitter because anytime you say goodbye, it's hard. It was hard after 15 years when I left Concord. It was hard when I left Mountain View. It was hard after 10 years to leave Pittsburgh to come to Daily City. And the difference this time is, in those other cases, I was going through saying goodbye to a lot of good friends and, and colleagues that I'd worked with for a long time and I'll be doing the same here. But in those cases, my career was still going on. In this case, I'll be saying goodbye and I'll also be saying goodbye to my career. And it, it makes it tough because I do like what I do. And when I first came to Daily City, I didn't intend to be here 10 years. I thought I'd be here about five and out and I'd retired about 62, but here it is. I'm pushing 67 and I'm finally leaving. I think maybe that's because I was afraid of retiring, so I had to give it five years to warm up to the idea. You know, Daily City's public works has changed a lot since I've been here. We didn't used to do fleet maintenance and we took that over from the Finance Department. We didn't use to do park maintenance and took that over from the old Park and Recreation Department when it was merged with Library. And we took over the stormwater prevention program from the Department of Water, Waste Water Resources. And we've done all of that with about 25% less staff than we had when I came here. And I think that's a testament to the, the quality of the staff in the Public Works Department, how hard they work to get their job done. I think sometimes your staff can just make life easy. I can tell you, when, when I get calls about minor things out in the field, I don't even hardly have to say it to my staff and they're out of... hardly have to say it to my staff and they're out ahead of me and they're taking care of it. And I think Daly City has a lot of really good and dedicated people working for it. Hopefully, you can keep hiring those people because just like the school district said, it's getting harder and harder and harder to get employees in the public sector now because it's, you, traffic here, this is one of the things I'm not gonna miss, is my commute coming here, which is a lot longer than it was when I first started. And, uh, the housing costs are so high that it's just extremely hard to get employees. So, hopefully, you will continue to get good employees to continue the, the work that we've done so far at this point. I think the city is really lucky that we were able to land Richard Chu as their parent to me because I think he's been here long enough to, to become one of us before he actually has to take on the reins of public works. And I think we're, I'm leaving the public works department in very capable hands with Richard. And I don't think you'll, the department would skip a beat, I think, with, with Richard there. And so, thank you for all your fine comments. Thank you for having me here at the city of Daly City. I've appreciated my time here. I've enjoyed the, the community and working with the residents and I'll miss it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I, I move to approve item eight.
Second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to item number nine, communications, approval of the written response to the grand jury report, smoke-free multi-unit housing, no ifs, ands, or buts. Good evening Lieutenant Christensen.
Good evening Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members. For those in attendance and watching, I'm Cameron Christensen, captain of the Daly City Police Department, and this evening, I will be presenting a draft response for final direction to the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen Samantel County Civil Grand Jury Report titled, Smoke-Free Multi-Unit Housing, No Ifs, Ands, Or Buts. Is there a little feedback?
It's probably that mic, it's probably on, yeah.
That might be on right there.
This report can be located on the Samantel County Civil Grand Jury website under Grand Jury, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen final reports. This report was issued in July of this year and it pertains to the impacts of secondhand smoke in multi-unit housing locations. Additionally, it examined the individual city ordinances, one of which we have, related the ease of access to education and enforcement resources for the community. The report listed fourteen findings and eight recommendations for which the city of Daly City was to respond. It's an eight-page report and if acceptable, I can summarize the response to the findings and recommendations if you would like. Great. Of the fourteen findings, the city agreed with eight of them. For the four findings associated to webpages for cities and other entities other than Daly City, the city neither agreed nor disagreed as we are not familiar with their webpages. There were two findings that we had partially agreement on. First was finding number nine, the city partially agreed with finding noting that an officer observing the municipal code violation is itself compelling evidence of a violation and no additional evidence or statements are necessary to substantiate detention or issuance of a citation. Finding number thirteen, the city partially agreed with the finding that the tobacco prevention program reported limited success in obtaining multi-unit housing smoking complaints, making it difficult to assess the efficiency of associated ordinances. The city responded that it has captured little data on the multi-unit housing smoking violations and therefore does not have enough data to determine the success of the ordinance nor report it to the tobacco prevention program. There were eight recommendations as follows. The first recommendation refers to improving the city's educational outreach to the residents regarding our ordinance by March thirty-first of two thousand nineteen. This is to include rights and obligations, how to report violations, improving the ease of reporting online and ensuring that the search functions for smoking-related terms directs residents to the ordinance for our website. The city has not yet implemented this recommendation, but will do so by the provided date. This will include an accessible link on the webpage, an associated informational page, reporting and retaliation considerations, and enhanced search capabilities through the search function. Recommendation number two regarding retaliation in our ordinance has already been implemented by the city. Recommendation number three is for the city to amend our ordinance to prohibit smoking medical marijuana in multi-unit housing locations by December thirty-first of two thousand eighteen. The city has not yet implemented, but it will in the future. The city will propose that city council expand the current definition to include marijuana and remove the portion that allows smoking of medical marijuana. The fourth recommendation refers to evaluating ways to improve collection and retrieval of multi-unit housing smoking complaints and violations to evaluate trends and efficiency of local ordinances by June thirtieth of two thousand nineteen. The city has not yet implemented, but will do so by June thirtieth of two thousand nineteen. We are working with dispatch services and our reporting software system to create specific call types that will allow for electronic inquiries of that requested data. The fifth recommendation is that the city make complaint data available to the tobacco prevention program and tobacco educational coalition on at least an annual basis by December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. The city's response is that the recommendation will be implemented by December thirty-first of two thousand eighteen. The sixth recommendations for the city, by December thirty-first, to conduct a review of current reporting methods used by the public for violations of the multi-unit housing smoking ordinances to ensure ease of reporting. The city's response is that the recommendation has not been implemented, but will be by the provided date via online reporting and other options. The last two recommendations, seven and eight, do not apply to the city of Daly City and therefore no response is required. The presiding judge, Honorable Raymond Swope, requested a written response to this report. The finalized written response, if approved, will be signed by interim city manager, Sean Maltby, and it will be transmitted to the superior report that will be placed on the Samantel County Civil Grand Jury website for reference. That concludes the summarized response to the grand jury report. The staff is available for questions, should you have any.
Thank you so much for your, uh, presentation and report. At this time, do my colleagues have any questions?
Motion accept.
Second.
Uh, may we have roll call, please?
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Gengona?
Aye.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number ten, resolution of the city council concerning the bankruptcy filed by Verdi Health Systems and a potential sale of Seaton Medical Center and Coast, Seaton Coastside. Um, as, uh, just the public knows that there has been, um, a filed bankruptcy by the owners of Seaton Hospital. And at our last council meeting, uh, with my colleagues, we did pass a resolution, um, in support of ensuring that we are advocating for, um, a hospital to remain because the community, um, has relied on it for so long. Um, you know, this, uh, so at this point, I do have, I want to, um, um, move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Thank you very much, but, uh, with some, um, amendments, uh, that I'd like to share Um, and so, the amendment is, um, actually a resolution of the city council, the city of Daly City, to maintain the current land use and zoning for Seaton Medical Center. Um, and, uh, you know, for that resolution and, oh, and a whereas clause including, whereas the zoning and land use designation in the city of Daly City's Sullivan Corridor specific, specific, specific plan only designate its use for a hospital. I think it's, uh, extremely important for us to take, um, this next step, um, you know, be, to, uh, verbalize and also in a document, a resolution, that we're extremely serious about retaining this, um, land for hospital use. And so, this is what, um, this resolution entails. Vice Mayor.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I think, um, that this is a, a very good and strong resolution to have at this time and I, I, I want to commend you for, uh, bringing this up. Um, th- this is a critical time, uh, for us in Daly City and for the community to understand, um, that we are, are not just sitting on our hands here and that we're actually trying to take some steps, um, to, uh, maintain a hospital in Daly City. So, I think, um, by getting ahead of this and, um, announcing to the world essentially that we are, um, going to, uh, do what we can to maintain the current land use and zoning, uh, for Seaton Medical Center is important and I think it does send a message, um, that we're gonna fight to maintain a hospital in Daly City and that, um, this is a necessary, uh, uh, step. And so, I, I commend you and support this resolution and hope that, uh, we can continue to fight for Seaton and, um, uh, have a hospital in Daly City. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, so, at this point, if there are no other comments, um, ask for a roll call, please. Oh, yeah, and I motioned to approve the resolution with the amendments followed, um, to change the, the title to a resolution of the city council of the city of Daly City to maintain the current land use and zoning for Seaton Medical Center. Um, also, including whereas clauses, whereas the zoning and land use de- designation in the city of Daly City's Sullivan Corridor specific plan only designates its use for a hospital and also whereas it has maintained its use for a hospital since nineteen sixty-five. And also, that, uh, the city council is committed to maintaining the hospital zoning and has no current plans to change the zoning for the Seaton Medical Center. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, may we have roll call, please?
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Gengona?
Aye.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Um, we are on item eleven, um, ordinance, the second reading ordinance, number fourteen twenty-two, amending zoning ordinance, adopting P D dash sixty A standards, Westlake Shopping Center. Um, Attorney Zimmerman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. This item came for first reading before the city council at the last regularly scheduled city council meeting. Uh, this is the second reading of ordinance number fourteen twenty-two, amending zoning ordinance, P D sixty A, for adoption.
Just need to adopt by motion? Yes.
Um, so, do I have a, adopt by, is anyone?
Yes.
Yes.
Do we do a roll call?
Uh, we could do a voice.
A voice? Okay.
Yeah, that's, okay.
Roll call?
No.
Uh, Ms. Christensen?
And this is to adopt the ordinance, correct? I, I didn't quite hear that. Yes, an enthusiastic yes.
Mr. Gengona?
Aye.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye. Thank you very much. Thank you. Moving on to, um, public appearances and oral communications, at this point, we have, um, a card from Ms. Pamela Di Giovanni.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I just want to say, the Seaton Medical Center, as you know, when we went for the first round with our largest employer, I really think that this next step in making it land use as a community really has resonated and that's a strong step. So, I'm very proud that you, that you took this step tonight because the people have been wanting to, they're very nervous, um, as you know, worried about emergency rooms and we have specialized care that people don't even know. People that, the heart attacks and skilled nursing and things that, that people don't even hear about. Different machines that are not in other places. We serve a large area, San Bruno, Pacifica, and our residents here underserved. So, I felt in good faith and, and deeply appreciate it and know that we can go to sleep at night and hopefully we will not have to use it, but even our firefighters and paramedics, staff here, you know, we never know when there's an emergency gonna happen. So, thank you so much for doing that. I commend your leadership and the council members for supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Sher- Sharon Keenan?
Honorable Mayor and council members, I'm here to ask for information from the council. I've noticed lately that several signs asking for your vote that were there before have been taken down. Uh, there's no way of telling who these people are, but there, is there some way to stop this childish practice? I'm asking for your help to in some way see that there is a fair and responsible election for all candidates. The time has come when we, our responsible voters have the right to choose our own candidates. At this point, they are all well-qualified and soon we will have debates to decide. So far, we have not heard anything about debates for the candidates and the ballots will be going out the last part of next month, so it doesn't give us much chance to decide on who we want to serve on the council. I was hoping that at least one of them would emanate from here so that people who don't go out and are, come home, they stay in their house, they can hear what the council member has to say. Because I've, I've seen a lot of times that when I went around, they say, you have a council? You have a mayor? I mean, they're, they're disconnected from reality here. So, I thank you for this help in this matter and I hope by speaking tonight, the listeners at home will kind of take note and if they see something going on, uh, somebody's, you know, see somebody take down a sign or something, say something to them because that's very irritating to not have a choice of all the candidates when they're all qualified to serve. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and actually, um, actually, the ballots will be going out in about three weeks. So, we really, um, I have heard rumors that the, um, Chamber of Commerce is not sponsoring, uh, a candidate tonight here, but, uh, maybe some other group can step up and help sponsor that along with...
The League of, yeah.
Along with the League of Women Voters? Because it's the league that puts it on.
Yeah. Say Frances Hines is doing it also. Has children.
Yes.
So, there are...
But we need something that's televised.
So, um, and I think what we'll do is with the city manager is compile the, the candidate, if we hear of any candidate forums, and just follow up with the League of Women Voters that usually have won every single election. Right, so, and we'll make sure to post it on our website.
Yeah, like that second weekend, in October, end of the first week would be the perfect time because the ballots will probably go in the mail on the ninth, they'll get here on the eleventh or twelfth. And I know that there's a lot of people out there, myself included, who I, the minute I get that ballot, I rip it open and I vote within about the first twenty minutes, it's in my hand, so.
Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to the appointments, board commission membership or committee appointments. Do I have any nominations or board for, board or commissions? Seeing none, or moving on to council committees report? Um, do any of my colleagues have any council committee reports from September tenth to Sep- September twenty-fourth? I will, um, update everyone on September nineteenth, council member Sylvester and I had an affordable housing committee meeting going over inclusionary housing ordinance. Given the need for more housing in general and also, uh, more so affordable housing built at the same time market units are built, we are overlooking, overhauling our affordable housing ordinance, um, about inclusionary units and, um, we, uh, will be sharing with you in the near future around that draft for that ordinance. But wanted to let the committee know that, um, council member Sylvester and I are working steadfastly on that committee. I think we've had like three or four committees already, meetings. On September twentieth, I also attended the Bosco meeting, the Bay Area Water Supply Conservation Agency Board Meeting, where over twenty member agencies, um, are advocacy organization to make sure we have adequate water... sure we have adequate water supply and conservation. And that is what I have for council committee reports. Are there any other city council, just city council reports in general? Seeing none from my colleagues, I have wanted to share with everyone, on September 12th to 17th, I got to visit London. I went to a global summit with other Filipino women around the world and was really gracious and humbled to receive a continuing influential award. And the reason why I'm sharing it is because they've awarded me for policymaking and visionary. And so, that is aligned with the work I do here, which I care so deeply about and wanted to share that each and every one of you. On September 17th, I took a flight back from London. I was able to come back two hours later. We had the 50th anniversary at ceremony. That happened on Sunday. Councilmember Glenn Sylvester was there, planning commissioner Chair Pam Di Giovanni. We had our city attorney, Rose Zimmerman, and also interim city manager Shawna Maltby, and also councilmember Gingona was there as well, and many other staff and community leaders. I was able to meet Mr. Geller Jr. So it was really amazing to hear the stories of, you know, what he mentioned about his father's vision, and so that was definitely an evening to celebrate 50 years of ceremony. On September 18th, Vice Mayor Ray Buenaventura and I met with the San Mateo County Medical Association. We were invited in regards to what we mentioned earlier, Seton. At present was the CEO, Mark Fratsky, and leaders of the medical staff. At that meeting, there were many questions around what would be the fate of Seton, and I think there were questions that were directed to the staff and CEO. That point, the question we asked the CEO is, is there an intent to keep the use of it as a hospital? At that point, he said yes. We'll see how it unfolds, and we are working with the San Mateo County officials, supervisor David Canapa, and also our state legislators to ensure that, you know, everyone's working together to sustain this important medical institution in our community. Also, on September 24th, the Daly City Partnership General Membership Meeting occurred. There was a panel discussion with supervisor David Canapa, the county manager, also our city manager Shawna Maltby and myself talked about issues concerning the community around issues within the city as well as issues that concerned community members from childcare to affordable housing, to what we are doing to ensure that we are handling our situation with calpers. I mean, it was a very robust conversation and panel, but to see engaged community members from the nonprofit sector to the school district, all around, really care about ways to give back to our community and ensure that, you know, we have resources is, was always a delight. I was able to also swear in the new board of directors, so that was a nice treat. Also, on September 22nd, was able to attend the conference on World War II in the Philippines at the University of San Francisco. And it was really also great to see a representative from Jefferson Union High School, from the Jefferson High School, actually, district, talk about how they're implementing stories of Filipino World War II veterans in their curriculum. And because this was a law that was passed, and to see it how it's actually being implemented in schools around California. So that was what that conference was about. Also, on September 23rd, I joined Assemblymember Phil Ting with his updates at the Presidio. He will also be having a town hall, which we can share on our website for further updates. Thank you very much. And at this point, does there any other reports from staff? Thank you. For this meeting, we will adjourn tonight's council meeting in the memory of the following. Donatilo Cimbresudarya, the grandfather of Commissioner Arlene Dos Magual. Also, Linda Ann Flynn Mcnesby, who was a longtime teacher at Woodrow Wilson Elementary School. And community member and small business owner Evelyn Cavinta Polido. May we all have a moment of silence, please?